Agenda, I think you guys sign up. I'm sorry. Herefield Village doesn't have a place for it. Herefield Township doesn't have a place for it. Lucille Township doesn't have a place for it. Lucille Village doesn't have a place for it. We have to do those everything. Give it all. We have brought disruption down this or that. Frankly said.
I could have been a teacher with space in your car and I would have gotten.
I feel so good if we were.
I didn't want to nail you.
That was such an English. Yeah.
Just before they heard.
Otherwise.
Well, the year before, the year before they.
We don't have. We don't. Perhaps if you could explain that. That's the only place of concern. One person of concern. We've never seen him.
Yeah, we thought of our senior.
Why they had to go all the way down. Meetings in the building so they could pull it over. I mean, people, that all makes sense.
Yeah, I never gave them.
He got four of those. The other guy.
Oh, by the third one, it took me so long. I'm fine there. There's no one. Actually, I'll remind you.
No, let's. Let's go for that both wrong tonight. No, thank you.
Talking like the Eagles fan. How many years has he talked?
No, no, no.
I mean, leave you for it. I never gave him on the basketball four years. Yeah, we don't face each other. I'm just saying.
Never really embarrassed.
Maybe all I would say is that you just, they would have been, no, she was like. She's been playing. I just think, oh, dude. It's the top one. I think almost there.
These players are already taken out. We, we all.
You call the job. Whatever.
So tell me, like, you suffer.
Big corporation. Yeah. Pretty much.
It's a novice role.
Yeah.
At least they didn't email soon.
There you go.
Just naturally. I don't know. Not well, but I know.
Now, my kids have a lot of ability. I don't like it.
Yes. I'm not superstitious.
Another divorce. Well, maybe that's. I love her. Yeah, Chad did a great job. We got her. Todd, he doesn't come. Jake was a two-year senior. He was media. Mine was ten. Mine was.
I still remember his name. He's here from the dorm room. Anybody to know. Y'all already all know.
That's the fact that he was.
We need to borrow.
Tush, tush, tush. I got a lot of these things like three years ago. I got a chair. Yeah, you got to keep on the porch. Oh, yeah. I bought a piece of. All right, it's seven o'clock. Like to call the meeting to order. We can begin, please, with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Van Ho, if you would call the roll, please.
Chairman, Roger Johnson.
Present.
Chairman Conrad Beth.
Conrad absent.
And Griffith.
Here.
Mr. Van Ho is here. Steve Van.
Here.
Four present, one absent. I would invite, given the number of folks here, and since we're not using a P A system, if you guys want to move up forward, that would be helpful, I think, for all of us. And make sure we can all hear what's going on. Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, comments or questions? I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Move and second it to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. I'd welcome once again a motion to appoint Melissa Burner as the ad hoc secretary for tonight's meeting. Mr. Van Ho moves.
Supported.
Supported by Mr. Griffith. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. You're stuck with us again.
Again, yeah.
Let me ask one more time for any public comment issues. The floor is open. Anything you want to say? Going once? I've never met a group so reticent to speak. And again, I sort of feel like the pastor of church, when everybody that comes in sits in the back pews, but that's okay. All right. Public comment closed. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Corper, would be any responses you have to questions that came up last week. And if you want to be in a place where everybody can hear you, that's, that's fine.
Do you want me to, when you say that, where do you, where would you like to sit? Do you want me to face the folks this way?
That's up to you.
Okay. So, I mean, typically, I'm addressing the planning commission, but please, folks, if you can't hear me and you can't hear me, let me know. I'll make sure I address you both. As far as the questions from last week ago, I've shared them with my team. They're working on written response, so I don't have anything new for you today, but we'll get that to you.
Okay, that's the entire list of questions, all the stuff we discussed. All right, so be it. And I know that the, the, the group has a new list, so. That's going to put a lot of pressure on next week's meeting. And hopefully, some of those responses perhaps might be electronic so they can be reviewed before we get to the last planning commission meeting next week, when we've got to make some choices.
Understood. And I, we are, right, working on written responses, so essentially, like, what I've done is from a process side of it, is sent this to Francesca. She's our development manager. She's distributed to the appropriate subject matter experts. We're getting that list of questions together so that we can return it all to you, so we will have them ready.
All right, thank you. Let me start with a, will that be before our meeting?
I can't really speak to the timeline of the team, but I will definitely take a note. Just so you know who we have here today, we have Caitlin. She's our local liaison person. She's taking the notes for me today about any questions y'all have, so please take a note that they'd like for next meeting. We all know our Keith from last time. He runs our old three hundred solar facility. He's our ops person. And then I'm Marla Corper, and I'm our development director for, for Misa region, which is our Midwest region.
There's a fairly large topic that I know there's a number of questions about to deal with soil and topsoil and, you know, the issue of farmability in thirty or thirty-five years. I have to speak to some level of embarrassment here. My wife and I have been undergoing a major landscaping project at our home outside of the village. Uncountable loads of fill and, I think, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty yards of topsoil. I found out after that was in place, it came from VP's arch solar farm, that they stripped the topsoil. I'm mortified and embarrassed to have been a part of stripping topsoil off of farmland in, I think that's, is that Fulton County? You start looking online, there's a, a construction company that posted an extensive article about their smart bulldozers and how effective they were at stripping untold amounts of topsoil and fill off that ground to do that project. My wife's thrilled to have some native buckeye dirt in her backyard, but at what price? I have been around, I've seen that project before, and I cannot imagine any way possible that that ground's going to be farmed at the end of that project's life. The terrain's a little hillier than here, and they stripped it to nothing. I know there's some other discussion on topsoil. Rich, you got some notes, you have questions?
Yeah. I was going through the drawings and we got listed sixty-one thousand five hundred linear feet of sixteen-foot wide access road. Twenty-five hundred feet of twenty-foot wide access road. You don't have listed, there's, they call hammerhead turnarounds. I got pretty close to thirty-six of those and twenty-five of the access from the existing roadways. How many yards of topsoil, subs soil were removed to make these new roads? And the turnarounds and the access? Will all that be kept on site? All that soil will be kept on site?
Site.
Because I don't see anywhere on the drawings. Any place where you have laydown areas for that amount of soil.
I mean, my first answer, but I want to make sure I speak to this in some detail because I don't want to just defer everything as I'll need to talk to our engineering team. Because when it comes to that level of detail, I honestly don't know. There are experts in it. And I'm afraid to quote P A two thirty-three with the citing regs, but I'm, off the top of my head, I was thinking that topsoil has to remain on the property from a regulatory perspective. But at Forsted standard is to leave it on the property and basically redistribute it. But, I mean, the roads. I'm just trying to think what I.
Is this a topic covered in your leases?
We do address access. So essentially, in our leases, we commit to returning the soil back to the condition it was prior to construction. So, for example, if there was topsoil that was removed, it would need to be put back. The detail of what that looks like, I can't really speak to. Let me get you an answer because I feel like I just don't know the level of detail and I'm going to be.
We also, there's another detail that shows where you're going to keep it. It's no more than ten foot tall and puts a little sil- sil fence around it. And there's going to be thirty, close to forty thousand cubic yards of dirt.
Do you feel like you've got the level of notes you need for that to understand the question? Yeah, so can we reiterate on a high level what the question is? How much topsoil is going to be moved to make?
Topsoil and then the subs soil. Because you're going to go down a foot.
Okay. And then that's specific to. Roads, new roads.
Roads.
Turnarounds, laydown yards, substation.
Laydown. You got two ten-acre laydowns. And possibly, going through the notes in each drawing, possibly, you know, another ten acres.
I mean, there's forty or fifty acres of stone. Twelve miles of access road.
Yeah.
On prime farm ground that P A two thirty-three says should not be adversely impacted by this development. So, of course, we want detailed answers on how those things can be corrected.
Yep.
And compatible.
Yep, understood. Sorry, I can't give you more today, but at the next meeting, I guess, just to provide some higher level context to, our plan is to have all of our subject manner experts back here to address any questions that I can't address either from last week's meeting, this week's meeting.
I think we'd welcome, if, if you were willing. We'd welcome a redacted copy of a lease.
Yeah, absolutely. And they're also, like, if you don't want the redacted copies, they're on the county website, so you could pull off any. I'm happy to just pull a couple off the website.
If you guys need more time, do you want to give us a thirty-day extension so we can vet this more thoroughly?
I mean, I don't think they need more time.
Okay, thank you.
Rich?
Okay.
Some road and stone questions, I think, that tie into this?
Well, that was, that was the majority of it. And how much gravel, you know, how many loads of gravel?
I don't know, but we'll get you in there.
I, I kind of figured.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Kind of, there's over two thousand.
Yeah.
Gravel train of fifty-ton loads of stone got to come in on our roads. What is two thousand loads of fifty-ton going to do to the roads? And what, what route are you going to take?
The roads are really, that's a common thing that comes up for us in construction. As far as, like, what's the weight that's being carried? And that's something through road use agreements with the county that we'll address. So that's something, actually, I think Kevin asked me at the last meeting, was what's our next steps with the county part of road use agreements? But essentially, we'll have to show, okay, here's the plan for the road. This is what will come in on this road. This is what will come on this road. And then based on that weight, we'll agree to repair the road, to improve the road. Like, it depends kind of on what the actual load and amount is. And we haven't had those negotiations yet, so I can't tell you exactly what that looks like. But that's the process.
Do you have a time? I'm sorry, do you have a timeline, when you're going to approach it? I mean, I meet with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't. Like, the other questions, I sent it, I mean, again, if you want to know a little bit more, it's probably, like, too much of the sausage making than you need to know, but I'm essentially our in-person representative for this. Francesca is managing all of our project manage, or I'm sorry, subject matter experts in the background to make sure we have the right questions. So she's managing getting that together, but I don't have the exact day to day.
Your attorney made it abundantly clear, the time is of the essence. We didn't create the hundred and twenty-day window. It's an unreasonably short window for a quarter-billion-dollar project. Housing developments take far longer and are worth way less money. And so time is of the essence. We schedule these meetings as quickly as possible. We've scheduled a number of special meetings. We really thought we would have answers to the last round of questions from last week. We have zero. You're not certain you can have them ready for us next week. And of course, we only have a week or two after that, and we would close to the hundred and twenty-day window. So we would hope that a project that's been in development since twenty twenty-two, a lot of these product answers would be at the tip of your tongue. So, you know, I think you understand my point, but I know you appreciate that. I'm just telling you, time is certainly of the essence.
Yeah, I, I just want to acknowledge and say I hear you and definitely understand that. Our team is aware of that, too, and we're moving forward. Having these meetings three weeks in a row, just a lot of moving parts. So we're handling it on our end and we will have those answers to you.
We're planning commission, the tradition, it meets once a quarter, so we've made a tremendous accommodation, so.
Rich, anything else?
Yeah, and the inverters. How many, how many inverters are there going to be?
Hundred, I think. Let's see, it's listed in the application. Let's look, I think probably the best way to do this is to look when this is defined and point to the application. I think so that I don't waste our time.
There is a list, I saw it in the document.
You thought there was a hundred of them? Just off the top of your head?
I don't want to, I'd rather give you a real number here. Yeah.
I counted them on the drawings and I didn't come, I come up with sixty-six.
Yeah, I'd say, like, less than a hundred, but near sixty-six is, like.
That actually sounds more accurate. It's two hundred megawatt?
Yeah.
That sounds more accurate. Even if ours were four hundred and fifty megawatt solar farm down in Texas, and we were a hundred and seventeen. If that gives you any idea.
Okay, good. So again, I was reading through the S D S sheets in the oil that you're putting in there. Is that, how much oil goes in each one of those inverters?
Uh, it just depends on the tank. I mean, on what.
The ones you're going to use here, how?
No, so you're speaking to the transformers. So those are the medium voltage transformers.
Well, the inverters.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's, are these G E inverters? I, I don't know enough about the tech. I'm here more to speak on operations.
Can you talk it, what you can speak to, though?
Yeah.
Without having the exact, like, amount, we can talk about relatively. With your inverters, what does everyday operations and maintenance look like at your site? Because it might be a bit different, but it's going to give you an idea of what the process looks like.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, so.
Reading through this, reading the mast.
Yeah, is it?
Reading through this, it's, it's very toxic. If it ever spills deadly to fish, any kind of fish. Every one of these fields drain in the rumor razor.
Could you read up what the oil is that we are filling it with?
It's a, it's an inhibited perphin transformer insulated oil.
Okay, so it's probably a F R three, which is actually not toxic, even ingested by animals.
Well, it doesn't say this in these S D S sheets.
Okay.
It says it's, it's a.
Yeah, I mean, that's typical to what we use for most projects is the F R three. It's actually biodegradable and it's not toxic to animals.
Harmful to aquatic life with long lasting effects with the S D S sheets. So if you don't use this, you have to use this if this, this is what you're spinning, right?
I, I can't speak, I can't speak to that. I, I haven't seen that document either.
I, I work for this.
Like I said, I just, I can only speak to what we typically use.
And you went with the fire department, what they're, what they, how they have to, in case there's a fire, what they have to do with this?
Actually, with our fire department yesterday.
Okay, do not use water jets as this will spread the fire. They know that, okay. Is it poured in? Is it pumped in? Is it coming in already?
No, it's a great question. So they actually, yeah, they actually have a specific process to where they filter it through. They have like a separate trailer of a machine that filters it through, make sure that there's, there's no other contaminants that go into, that go into the tank that we're putting the fluid in.
You have something in place in case a hose breaks or something?
Exactly.
It's all over the ground?
Talk about, like, what's your spill prevention plan and then how do you react if there would be? I don't even know if there's something to react to. Is that, is that appropriate for solar? Like, I'm thinking about my own gas days when I say that.
It gets in the ground that well, it's spoken up to.
Right, so, yeah, if we, if we have that, yeah, we follow very specific spill prevention, care and control program. It's a S P C C program to where we have spill kits even throughout the site. But something like that specifically, we have that type of material ready and available to make sure that there's nothing remaining there if there is to be a spill.
So there's no containment system, like you see like.
No.
There is. Yeah, there is. There's containment bits, there's all sorts of stuff. I mean, I, I can't miss out the whole thing, but, yeah, so we, there is a process. I'm sure we can find an example if, that we can maybe share. So, but even with us on the operations side, when we do our oil sampling and our testing, that's something that we make sure that we have containment and everything else set up so that we don't even spill it wrong when we're out there taking oil samples, making sure that the machine is operating normally, that there's not anything that we need to worry about. We're pretty proactive with that to make sure that there's.
So any type of equipment that would have, like, any oil, like, I feel like, I'm like the, I'm not the best person to be speaking to this because I'm not the expert, but just knowing from, like, the ops perspective, anything that would have, anything that was liquid, if that exists, would have a secondary containment. And that's like a safety requirement.
Yeah, we do monthly visual inspections as well.
Through the government, it's.
Yeah, we do monthly visual inspections. We actually check torched on all the bolts and everything, all of the hardware that's involved with the machinery. So we make sure to stay on top of that as well.
Okay. And it also says in here, it could withstand up to a fifty mile an hour wind. These are elevated up.
Yeah.
They're elevated up off the ground ways.
Yeah, they're on like an inverter pad or an inverter skid is what it's called. Yeah.
We might get over fifty mile an hour wind, then what is going to happen?
Fifty mile an hour is easy. Our site actually lived through hurricane barrel last year, and we didn't have any inverter skids that.
But that's in, that's in Texas. I don't care what's happening down there. I'm concerned what's happening there.
Exactly, yeah, and you're speaking of more than a hundred mile an hour winds that we experienced and the inverter skids didn't move.
Are they built the same?
Are they what?
Are they built the same down there as they're going to be built here?
I would, I would be willing to bet they're built, probably.
It's, I'm just reading what you, what you put in here. It says, well, withstand a fifty mile an hour wind.
Exactly. Again, I can only speak to the operations, I mean, and my experience, so. Fifty mile an hour.
A couple of years ago, we buy a lot more than a fifty mile an hour wind, right in the middle of where it's going to be, too. So now we want that oil spilled all over the place.
Right. These kids, if they put them on, are pretty robust, the piles and everything, so.
We can get a picture of what it looks like, too, just so you understand the visual of, like, a skid is essentially a pad. Is it concrete?
Uh, yeah, so there's a portion of concrete to that as well. And the piles, the piles that it is.
It's not concrete, it's just flowable fill.
I'm sorry?
It's not concrete, it's flowable fill that you got, the, the pad.
Right, there's, well, there's portions of it that, that are, and then there's portions of it that aren't. Yeah.
All right, so you can find out that.
Anything else on this particular topic?
Got an inverters, no?
The inverters, we have fifty-six solar inverters located throughout the project site, as well as two one sixty-seven M B A with three forty-five K V step-up transformers at the substation.
And just so the commission knows, our acoustic experts reviewed the data on these inverters, and they did not actually specify a particular model in respect, but a class of inverters. So it's not a hundred percent certain which be, be in the end. That's our analysis at that point, so I would ask, but we may not have the weeks it takes to get an answer.
Okay, we move on to the next topic. I want to back up and be clear. I'll get to you in a sec. I want to be clear. So the impression I'm, I'm getting here is that at the end of the project life, the gravel's removed, twelve miles of, of, of stuff hauling away, the turnarounds, the pads, everything's removed, the topsoil's put back. That's the impression I have.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
So if we put a condition in a special land use approval that says none of the topsoil will leave the site, that doesn't cause you any harm?
No, I think, actually, that's like a really good example of how to safeguard that if you have a concern, is to make that a requirement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. As we get it up, Brett, did you have a question?
I did. I'm sorry, I didn't put my name under, but I think Rich asked something about the fire department, something like that. And then, like I said, we met with them today. Was that with the fire department or?
Oh, sorry, just where my solar farm is at.
Your solar farm?
Yeah, we're actually, next Saturday, we're actually training thirty firefighters to. Yeah, we're actually, next Saturday, we're actually training thirty firefighters to be NFPA seventy E certified. So, and for anybody that's not aware, NFPA seventy E is, uh, the basics in electrical safety. So we figured that, that along with us giving a practical side of it too, which isn't required for the certification, but we're giving a practical so that they can better manage, we have solar and then we're also building battery storage at our site as well, so that they can better handle those situations for us. And then there's multiple other solar farms around in the area that already exist and more that are coming in that area. So we wanted them to be most prepared. One of, one of my dear friends is actually, uh, trained and certified through the OSHA classroom to be able to train in those. So, I met with him yesterday, we're doing that, we're also looking into getting them a drone tethering system so that, uh, they, because they're also volunteer fire department and we're surrounded by volunteer fire departments as well, so to better equip them, we're getting them this drone tethering system to where they can go out to the site, they can set up the box, the drone shoots up into the air and it helps them get aerial footage of the, uh, of the fire or anything else on our site, their site, or any fire that they come in contact with. As you know, sometimes, you know, even a house fire, depending on where it's going, what it's doing, it's just way easier to have aerial footage and a volunteer fire department can't afford a pilot to be able to do all that. So, we've just been doing those types of things to try to help them out.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, if I can follow up on the ag land preservation and soils topic, reading your response from the US Fish and Wildlife Service, they made these recommendations, they said, site selection and layout recommendations. Select a site with the least wildlife value practicable. Sites such as vehicle parking areas using elevated solar panels, commercial rooftops, brownfields, industrial developments, or municipal solid waste landfills may provide adequate space for solar development and have no impact to existing wildlife habit. Additionally, developing solar with compatible forms of agriculture, e.g. dual-use farming, may allow for continued crop production or grazing by using elevated solar panels and have very minimal potential for additional loss of wildlife habit, habitat. Isn't it true that you attempted to do none of those things with this project and simply sought out to acquire farm ground? We have solar developmental areas that are brownfields, landfills, rooftops, parking lots. You also could have come in with elevated panels and farmed underneath of them, as so many of your leftist proponents seem to advocate on the Facebook pages all the time, but the truth is, you've only ever pursued one thing, and that's our very high quality farm ground.
Let, let me tag on to that if I might. Um, last week RG was talking about, we were talking about mitigating field and household tile damage. Um, quote, um, "I was working as a subcontractor in Illinois and it was the same thing, great farmland and a lot of field tile." I look in volume one, uh, exhibit A one dash, dot, two dot, three, farmland under site and planned facilities. Soils designated as prime farmland if drained consist of ninety-five point eight percent of the project area. How do these statements reconcile with the requirements in PA two thirty-three? Section two twenty-six, seven F. The proposed energy facility will not unreasonably diminish farmland, including but not limited to prime farmland. We're talking about what, twenty percent of our farmland? Um, that's a diminishment to me, and I would submit that this application doesn't comply with PA two thirty-three's requirements in this area.
Not just some prime farm ground, but demonstrably the best in the Midwest. These sections here are among the best in the Midwest. In other words, particularly in view of US Fish and Wildlife Services guidelines, you could not have picked a worse place to develop a solar project than in these particular parcels.
And if you look at the background in Illinois County, if you travel at all, the western side of the county's got a lot more terrain and hills than here. That's difference in glatiation and this being former Lake Erie lake bed, there's a huge difference in soils. But, you know, your application says ninety-eight, ninety-five point eight percent of the project area is prime farmland. How do we reconcile that with what PA two thirty-three says?
Absolutely. So, I mean, I think the two things that I can speak to are, first of all, why are we here? And I think we covered this during the public hearing, but I'll make sure that I reiterate it. It really comes down to where are there available electrons on the Michigan grid? And that is the substation that is in this area, it's the Maraca substation. That is, I, I, Roger, I see you smiling and like.
So the location of the substation takes precedence over the location of prime farmland, that's your answer?
Under PA two thirty-three.
Yeah, well, I see what you're saying, I am not saying that. I'm explaining you from a technical perspective, that is how this project is cited. The other thing I'll say is, we have twenty-plus landowners, all who are farmers, who have willingly decided that this is a good use of their farmland because it allows to keep their farmland in their name and pass it to future generation, and they full-heartedly believe after doing the research that they'll be able to use this as farmland again, so I understand what you're saying.
Could you show me that exception in PA two thirty-three, that unless it's close to a substation or the underlying farmers don't care, that it's okay? Because I don't see that in PA two thirty-three. It says adverse impact on prime farm ground, by your own words, it's prime. You're here because the landowners are willing and the substation is nearby, but I don't see that exception in PA two thirty-three.
Look, and to address that, can we read the sentence that's before the ninety-five point eight? So if you look at the full section, I'll read it from the beginning. The area land use maps for the proposed project display, farmland classifications within the project area and a one thousand foot, three hundred and five meter buffer, including prime farmland and farmland of local importance. There are no soils designated as prime farmland within the project area. And then it reads.
Except?
Soils designated as prime farmland if drained.
Which it all is.
So none of this is tiled?
So, you, you know, what you're saying is, you don't have any prime farm ground here, except by our own admission, the ninety-five percent of it is prime farm ground because it's all tiled and drained, which our soil expert has testified to as well. So, I'm familiar with the sentence and it's, it's a flat contradiction, it's internally inconsistent.
Is there any estimate or guesses to how much of this, uh, least ground is tiled?
There is a large amount of land that is tiled, I don't know exactly the amount, but the farm, the land that is being actively farmed, a lot of it is tiled.
As we all know, virtually all farm ground in, in this county is tiled because it was former lake bottom. It was the original German immigrants that first tiled it to make it feasible to farm in the first place as they drained the cottonwood swamp, et cetera. And so, there's no question, this is prime farm ground. Their documents support it, our documents support it, every soil classification supports it. It's all class one and two, which is prime by itself, and you add the tiling, it's absolutely prime. And you, again, for the commission's purposes, you could not pick, under PA two thirty-three, under US Fish and Wildlife Service guidelines, a worse possible place for a solar project in the state of Michigan, except as convenient to the substation and their willing landowners. It's economically expeding, which is an exception I don't see in PA two thirty-three.
All right, if, again, put it on the list, um, if you wish, um, a response next week, better yet, responses, uh, like email during, during our intervening time. Anything else on the farmland issue, Ed, Rich?
How many, how many miles of underground conduit is there gonna be? You have any idea?
I do not know off the top of my head.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
Yeah.
Now, is that, what is that? You're gonna board that?
So, I mean, it's typically bored, there's different ways you can do it, depending on what else is happening around. Our primary way to do it would be boring. Trenching is considered in some instances, but I think in the majority of cases, it would be boring, that's the least impact.
Is that planned to remove to a thirty-five years?
So for the state of Michigan, and because there is tile, we often do not remove it because we put it under the tile. And that is like the standard practice that a lot of farmers with their land don't want it removed because they don't want it to start the tile. That said, it's possible to do either, so that's like when you were talking about special conditions, that's something, that's something that can be considered. It's more typically a preference of the landowner, or if the township has interest, then it is, you know, something you could consider as a special use.
Is the conduit from the inverters to the substation?
So.
It's not from panel array to panel array?
Yeah, so, um, so as far as, again, I, I haven't seen the specs, but even just to our site and a few of the other solar sites that I have worked on for us, a lot of the DC collections are mostly above ground, and then some then will go in the most convenient place, then into a piece of conduit, into the ground, to the inverter, where that is where the, uh, AC power comes in and provides power then over to DC, over to DC for those.
So that would be removed at the end of the project life because it's not as deeply sited, or is that all being bored too?
Anything that goes underground has to either be identified via, like, trying to identify tiles and then be around them or be bored under. I know we talked about that a little bit last week. The approach depends on what's appropriate at the construction site, but likely either way, even if it's above, the chance of it hitting tile and having more soil disturbance, usually landowners choose to leave it in, but that's again, something that can be considered.
So you don't have a depth picked out yet then?
No.
It.
I could, if you wanna know about depth though, like, I can ask our team if, our, if tiles are typically located where, how low do we go under? Would probably be the best I could give you.
All these boring pits that you called up, are those gonna be permanent concrete casements with a lid on them or what, what are? What says boring pits, is that a detail on?
Boring's, like, in this context is very non-invasive because it's small, because the wire you're running is relatively small. So there'll be a small hole that essentially, the technology runs through and then it runs out, and then afterwards it will be capped.
Do you got any drawings, boring pits?
I, I don't know the terminology, but that's what our boring process is like.
It's probably just deferring or, uh, referring to just what it is at the time and that's filled out there. So, usually, again, from what I've seen is that there's conduit that then, cable then comes out of it, that conduit, and it goes a couple feet and around from where we then had a more pit, but then it's all dirt.
So you don't have, you don't have detail on what, what even one looks like?
I could just say that it, well, we could, we could probably provide photos, some photos, yeah, it's not like.
At your site, like, can you even recognize where they're reporting now that it's in operation?
Uh, no, unless we use the map, I mean, there's vegetation that's grown over it. We've done, I mean, the, the, uh, construction teams did a heck of a job for any of those areas where they reseeded with natural vegetation and put it back to the way it was.
Very tactically speaking, like, when boring is done, to the common eye, you shouldn't be able to tell that it was at that location, but we can provide a photo.
I see the wildlife, this service is recommending eight-foot-high fences so deer can't get in, is that correct?
Without reading the document, I can't tell you the height, but what I can tell you is we'll follow the recommendation of the wildlife services.
Concern about deer entrainment, which I know Ranger Powers had an ongoing issue with in Alwasso, gates being left open and deer being trapped inside. Strikes me as the very definition of habitat fragmentation, which usually the environmental left is very concerned about. You have a substantial amount of area outside your fenced-in boundary, right?
You mean under lease?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, will that go back to agriculture, or is that gonna be mowed? Is that gonna be, what's your intentions with that?
That's up to the leaseholder, so whatever is outside of the fence line will be released, and then I would, I mean, I don't wanna speak for them, but whatever their typical practice with the rest of their.
With the part you're under control of.
Yeah.
So my question is this, I've seen a lot of solar installations that, particularly when they were sited under local regulation, never thought to require regular mowing outside the fence or around the arbor byde. And as a result, it grows up to weeds. Everything inside the perimeter is mowed because it affects your generation if the weeds get too tall. So, I guess, how often will you mow the area under your control outside the fence? Is that gonna be three, four times a summer, is it once a year? Is it something we could stipulate in a conditional land use permit? I mean, uh, in my mind, you know, one out of four dead arbor byde and then weeds this tall, um, first of all, is bad practice for farming when there's so much concern about nuisance weeds in the first place.
Yeah.
And yet I see that happening not at one or two solar installations, but most. So, it becomes a critical component, so if you're willing to agree to that stipulation, I think it'd be foolhardy not to make sure that's mowed three or four times a year.
Yeah.
We typically do that, uh, as, as Marlon said, that it really just depends on the lease agreement. Uh, I'll give you an example, we have one, um, they're not even a landowner, but they spoke with the landowner, they're renting a house that's on the land, and what we ended up doing was still, um, mowing a portion of it, but they didn't wanna see the solar farm. So, you know, we, we came up with a regular, uh, or a natural seed mix that then grows, so they don't necessarily see the solar farm. But then we mowed an area as well because they were noticing that some of, you know, they wanted a little more distance between us and the solar. So, it's really just working with landowners and yourselves, making sure that everybody, uh, you know, is happy with how we manage the vegetation, both inside and outside.
And from my perspective, as only administrator who could be put in the position to enforce these things, first of all, I would say, y'all seem like very nice folks and very earnest. I've dealt with a lot of developers for the last sixteen years, and I will say, you come across more sincere than the majority of them.
Yes.
That being said.
Appreciate that.
The repeated news in the financial sections of the paper shows that Orsted is in serious financial trouble. They had to sell a bunch of, uh, they had to acquire eight point nine billion dollars in equity, not to fund future expansion, but simply to maintain ongoing operations. And now Equinor, as far as, I know an oil company's throwing in a billion bucks in this thing. It's not unreasonable for us to have serious concerns about the long-term viability of Orsted, whose share price since twenty, what, twenty, twenty twelve has dropped ninety percent. Um, will you be the partner with our community three years from now or one year from now? I mean, those are assurances you guys can't make us because it's way above your pay grade too. And we struggle to see how we protect our community from that risk. I mean, Ranger Powers' track record on the projects I've seen is not like the example you paint, but what if they end up as the next owner? I mean, we need some insurances that are enforceable if this thing proceeds as proposed.
There's, there's, there's two things from our standpoint, and it doesn't matter if we're dealing with BP, whoever we're dealing with, it behooves us to look thirty years in the future. Now we're talking about pulling out concrete, pulling out endless yards of stone, restoring this on and on and on. And I don't know of any company that I can sit there and go, yeah, by God, they're gonna be around in thirty years, let alone with the unfortunate struggles that your parent company is dealing with. Combined with the unfortunate wording in PA two thirty-three that says, there is not a full, um, um, recom, um, decommissioning bond in place for ten years. Okay, so that means now we've gotta look and say, are these guys gonna make it for ten years? Which begs the question, would you guys accept as a condition fully funding the decommissioning in year one?
Yeah. I think these are reasonable questions to ask, like, obviously I can't answer that, commit to that on behalf of Orsted, but that's something that we'll look at and give an answer for you, like, on these other questions.
Thank you.
And I just wanna, like, acknowledge, like you said, Kevin, there's, you feel like this behooves both the project and the community. you feel like this behooves both the project and the community. That is something that we really like to work with on our local communities are like, what are the things you're worried about? And what can we agree to so that you feel more comfortable? So like the thing like mowing, there's kind of the two pieces to it. One is we do release the most, most of the land that's right outside again with so that one, our landowners can have that back and ag use if they choose. And two, there's not really a, a use for the project to own land or have land, not own, excuse me, leased land that's not in operational use. So it's released, but like the mowing thing makes total sense.
And frankly, I would say to the commission, my own personal opinion, arbor byde, there's a screening, strikes me as ridiculous.
Yeah, it's worthless.
It's ineffective and.
And I get it.
My informal recommendation to you guys would be if you maintain proper mowing, skip the trees because they, in my experience, make it look worse and don't screen anything.
For, for me personally, the by far bigger issue is a decommissioning bond year one, not year ten.
Yeah.
And especially given the current political business climate as it affects not just you guys, um, you know it, I know it.
Yeah.
But all these things that we're talking about here that deal with decommissioning, that we need to be concerned about for our children or grandchildren, that says if you lockstep PA two thirty-three, ten years. And for me to sit and be comfortable and say, we're going to still have somebody around to do that decommissioning ten years from now, that's a, that's a serious, serious concern. Sorry, Kevin, that's a bigger one for me than mowing.
Well, I agree. And, you know, and unlike a wind project, because I saw Cordelia Power was here, I guess they stepped out. If Cordelia goes bankrupt, the farmers keep farming. If your solar project stops and sits for a couple of years due to financial problems, the farmers, A, probably aren't going to get their lease payments and B, can't farm it either. So there's a tremendous risk there in a way that's not true with a wind project. So, I mean, yeah, the financial risk to us as a community is high. And so that the commission knows and the public knows, under any other special land use permit provision, if a developer came in, made a promise, agreed to these stipulations, and then five years out, they broke the terms of that special land use permit, we could revoke that special land use permit. Guess which land uses Governor Whitmer has taken away our ability to revoke a special land use permit for? Wind, solar, batteries. So even though we have this power to negotiate this now, if they break the terms, our hands are tied in a way that they are not with any other developer, including a coal-fired power plant or a gas-fired power plant. We would have authority to do things over that that we don't here. So not to mention, we've been given a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
To process a quarter-billion-dollar project.
Um, one quick one, um, your, um, the PowerPoint you presented on August fifteenth, uh, as we've talked and, and it has significantly different numbers on tax distribution than what we saw from ESA and what we saw in that timeframe from our, um, appraiser, okay? Yours shows three times more money to, um, Britain Deerfield Schools than what? What we got from our, um, appraiser. But at the same time, your numbers are showing eighty thousand dollars a year or a little less. Uh, during the PowerPoint presentation, and, and let me forgive you in advance, you said twelve million to Deerfield Schools. The correct word was, it was twelve million over the project to the IST, not, not here. And that then, um, was, that was on your graph.
Yeah.
It, you know, we all misspeak when we're.
I was nervous.
Standing in front of a, of a group and understood and forgiven. But the other side of that is, is seventy-eight thousand dollars a year does not allow us to build new school, school facilities as what was the claim. So as that question is one that we're deferring to next week, let me add that little piece of, of data.
I'll mention with that, I do know like with us looking at that data, I asked Francesca, Francesca to go back to our tax consultant and try to get more granular so that you have a clear view of like what things look like year to year for your request. So we are working on it and.
And, and it would frankly be very, very helpful to have that in time for our, um, appraiser to review it and confirm or deny that. Now, all of these questions have priority, but again, um, to have that information and some real numbers on what's the township get, what does the local school get? I don't give a damn about Lenawee County. I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin, I can't, I can't care less.
You know, I can raise your taxes.
Yeah, I care about, oh, no. What accrues to the township, our, our, our emergency services group. To me, those are the important numbers. We're talking a Deerfield Township project affecting Deerfield Township residents. And if we're claiming great benefits and all the preaching we get about why we need to do this for the money, I want to know what the money is. Uh, next topic, if I might.
It's your meeting.
I'm sorry. Who else can I piss on? I want to review some stuff from the August meeting and, and kind of poll the committee, the commission here on what their responses were. In some of your presentation, you said you're introducing people. And Viviana from First Solar, they're the manufacturer we're working with and they're headquartered right over the line in Perrysburg. Accurate?
Accurate.
Uh, later, how do we have American workers? And again, this is pulled from the electronic transcript, but how do we have American workers, American-made products? What does the full life look like? A big way we do that is with First Solar. First Solar is the manufacturer we're using and citing on this project. And we have an existing agreement in place with them. What was your impression on who this panel supplier was after that meeting?
First Solar.
First Solar.
I wasn't there.
It wasn't there.
I'm coward. But no, just by, real quick, your First Solar, aren't most of the solar panels shipped over here overseas and go? They're not produced down there. They get, there's ships of them that come in for First Solar.
Something that's.
Because there's people that watch the ships for that company. They come over here.
All right, let, let me hold up, hold the response. Let's finish the point and then I'll turn it over to you. Uh, Viviana stood up during, um, public comment. I'm part of the local affairs team at First Solar. First Solar is the module technology supplier for this project. And the electronics transcript, she said something about thirty thousand jobs. First Solar's total US employment is eighty-one-hundred, but it wasn't a clear statement. Again, First Solar's a module technology for this project. Then, a week ago, um, your comments, we're looking at First Solar panels. And then in the discussion about, um, recycling, you said, uh, we have a commitment to recycle both with First Solar and any other panels we use.
So to be clear, First Solar is who we're using on this project. We have a hundred percent recycling commitment at Orsted to both.
Not a question.
And when, I'm sorry, that's where I thought you were going.
My thinking is going is to, you said, or any other panel we use.
That's where I was going. Yeah, so the hundred percent commitment for our entire company is like, what kind of panels do you have at your site?
Uh, we have JA and Long J Solar.
Yeah, so they don't have First Solar, but we're also committed to recycling them. So that was my, I was trying to show that we are all encompassing of recycling, not just with First Solar.
Okay, the question is about recycling.
Okay.
The question is, whose panels are you using?
First Solar.
She made it clear.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent. And like one of the reasons, first of all, we have a procurement agreement with them. So we have procured a ton of First Solar panels that we're using across projects over multi-years. That's because of the American-made piece of it. For this project, it was particularly important to us because they are located so close. It was, if, I mean to say, this is an elegant way to say it, but like it would be a shame not to.
Okay, my point being, the comments, August thirteenth, the comments last week, seemed to indicate a difference.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it that way, but.
Secondly, the comments about American workers, American-made projects, tagging on to where Steve was going, First Solar has a massive operation in Malaysia where most of the panels that I wore are produced. So there are two or three production facilities in the US are where your panels are going to come from.
I mean, honestly, I don't know the answer. That's something I can talk to Viviana about and get the answer. Like the whole reason we have the agreement is to have American-made, but I don't want to sit here and promise you because I'm not the one who's procuring the panels. That's my procurement team. So if I sat here and looked you in the eyes that I know right now today.
So then how, how do we categorize, categorize statements that say, how do we have American workers, American-made products? You said that and now we're going, well, we're not sure.
Well, Viviana spoke to their domestic pipeline. And I don't have that exact quote in front of me. I could pull up the transcript if you would like. But the idea of partnering with them is the total American-made. But I don't want to sit here and tell you how they make their panels because I'm not the one who is watching that supply chain, but I can get that answer for you.
But it's critical for the investment tax credit and one big beautiful bill, right?
Yeah.
That, you know, there's now foreign sourcing issues that affect your ability to qualify for tax credit.
Yeah. I mean, the fact of the matter is, like Kevin just pointed out, I'm quite confident the answer is yes. But I'm under the impression that you feel like I'm like trying to get one over on you. So I want to get the right answer for you rather than inferring a guessing.
I would guess you can comprehend a, a, a touch of confusion here.
Yeah, I see what you're.
Between those statements and these, okay?
So I, I'll give you an answer. I wish I could give it to you right now, but.
Um, what else, gentlemen?
Steve, I, I have a question about the print, actually. Every page on it that I see says not for construction. So are we actually getting what we're seeing? Or is it also something to change?
So the design process is thirty-sixty-ninety. It's like the shorthand word, meaning as we move further down in construction, we continue to refine. This is thirty percent drawings. So when a project is at this stage, essentially the full investment hasn't been made. Without a permit, there's no route to market. So you don't buy these really detailed drawings. The sixty-ninety gets into a lot of electrical, structural, who am I forgetting?
Civil.
Civil, mechanical pieces. The layout will not change as far as this is where they're going to be sited. It will continue to get more and more intricate.
So you're talking about the finer details?
Yeah.
So visual receiving what we're going to see when it's done?
Yeah.
Right now?
Yeah. So it's like you will have an as-built as a part of it as well. So at the end of construction, you'll take your, this permit, let's just say in theory that this is approved. You would have this site plan. You submit a pre-construction site plan typically, then. I'm assuming that's a step of this process depending on how we move forward. And then you would have the as-built. And those might have small, different iterations, but they're typically the same.
I understand how as-bills are, we're constructing ourselves, so.
So you know better than I do, probably.
Just as-bills are generally routing things differently. So I just want to make sure you aren't moving panels out, setbacks changing, stuff like that.
Yeah, I think like in two, like one level higher, whenever we get a permit, you can't change the layout where you've committed to things being sited. So like I can speak to on another project I'm working on, I have the permit, we're going into construction Q one of next year, we're on nineties. And that's often when like mechanical things come up where engineering team's like, hey, I want to move this to this parcel because this might not fit as well here as it does there. And I'm like, hey, well, we need to find a different solution because we don't have this approved in our permit. Or the other option would be to move forward, or I'm sorry, to go back to the county, township, whoever it is, and ask them, hey, can we make this amendment? And it kind of depends on the county's willingness. And we'll either change it if we need to with the county, it's an amendment to the permit, or we would make it work within the site plan that we have.
Rich?
I think I'm good for right now.
Go ahead.
Yeah. My, my question is, is like for the non-participating homeowners and since you are going to be using their property as part of the, part of the setback, it's their, their home, the dwelling, it's not the property line. So have you reached out to any homeowners and non-participating or maybe they might be compensated anything or?
Yes, there's, I guess, two pieces of that. There's setbacks from both property line and from dwelling. From dwelling, it's three hundred feet. And then from property line, the state statute is fifty. For us, we're doing one-fifty or more. As far as good neighbor agreements go, we have sent out a letter to all the neighbors to give them an overview of this process. And in these public hearings, we've let folks know and this continues to be proved. You're interested in a good neighbor agreement? It's essentially looking at this is the project footprint, this is the setback, but you can expect coming to agreement on terms and some sort of compensation for being surrounded by the project. So if that's something that folks are interested in, Caitlin has sign-up information. We have our ways to contact us. That's definitely something we do with pretty much every project.
When, when did you send out letters to?
This year. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but.
That's the first I've ever heard of that.
Yeah, so we sent out letters showing this is our project footprint to all abiding landowners.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
I have any, that's a new one.
What's the criteria of getting one of the letters? Because it's going right next door to me and I don't have the letter.
I don't know the answer, but we can provide a list of everyone. Oh, I don't know if we can do that because.
Because maybe I'm outside of that perimeter.
Yeah.
Outside that criteria, which is a possibility. I'm just curious what that is in order to get a letter.
Yeah. Oh, I don't have the answer off the top of my head.
That's when this finishes, because I have some answers.
I did some research on one of the issues that came up last week and, uh, and, uh, perhaps some doubts in Mr. Popriyan's absence. He indicated that power rates here versus Denmark are immaterial and because words were not apples to apples. There's a lot of different sources. Most reliable I could find shows rates in Denmark get over double what they are in Michigan. That in the face of the constant, um, claims that, this is our way to cheaper power, this is our way to save on our electric rates, this is the way. But then you look again at, at the most unbiased source I can find and, and look, they're all over the map. There's one that claims Denmark's four times what the US is, okay? That the rates are attributable to, and this is a quote, and forgive me, I did not cite where the quote came from. I'll find it if I need to. Attributable to aggressive renewables policy in Denmark and taxes. And what an interesting coincidence is that, that the taxes are set by the entity that owns a majority of, of your stock. So that says, geez, if, um, you know, we need to raise cash or whatever, we can either, we can throw more tax on the, on the rates or we permit, permit a higher rate. I know the background of Orsted is, I think, Dong, is that correct?
Danish.
Danish oil and natural gas, is that the translation?
Yeah.
Um, and now, um, second biggest investor is.
May have thought it.
I honestly think there might be the first groom that didn't laugh on the first one.
I was exceedingly proud of having kept a straight face.
I'm sorry, I really shouldn't have said that.
Some things, no matter what the language is, some things just don't translate well. He said, uh, that Orsted does not supply the majority of electric power in, in Denmark. I cannot find anywhere that doesn't say they do. And then the second biggest shareholder is Equinor, as Kevin pointed out. Equinor is, for those of you not familiar, is a. Equinor is, um, for those of you not familiar, is a Norwegian oil and natural gas company, two-thirds owned by the Norwegian government. So we're being surrounded by Vikings, friends, that's what they, you know. The, the Viking invasion has started and by God, we're going to go back and we're going to get two thousand acres of Greenland.
Maybe it's time to actually.
The point being, um, and, and this is simply a counter to his claim that this is an apples to apples. The core is, we're being told this is a way to, to save on our electric rates and here's your home country with the highest rates in Europe. That doesn't lend a lot of credence to the claim. Are there any comments on the, uh, safe harbor issue?
Roger, may I, um, just ask, with the.
Oh, okay, you're still on my last topic. Thank you.
Parallel, but something I was thinking about from that discussion last week, would you want to see what does electricity costs look like in states that are, have more mature renewable energy?
I know what those are, thanks.
Familiar with that. And a lot of those, like everybody wants to talk about ERCOT. ERCOT is not a direct comparison to Michigan at all.
Yeah.
Because we're a regulated monopoly state.
Agreed.
Which means every power plant adds to an increase in property, to bills that's owned and operated by monopoly utilities because of their ten-point-seven percent guaranteed rate of return on CapEx. So irrespective of how cheap the energy is, doesn't matter. They're going to make additional profits, our rates will invariably go up, which the utilities themselves have conceived.
Yeah.
I, I testified on energy policy for well over a decade, we're well conversant on that.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I was thinking more of like other Midwest states, but understood that you have that covered.
I want to talk about Iowa.
Texas is always the, the case that gets thrown at us.
Where they have their own.
I have driven.
Gas.
I've driven every inch of Kansas, or Texas and Kansas. I've driven every inch of Texas and I did not see one square acre of farm ground that's as good as the front lawn is here, okay? There's a lot of space in Texas that if I were, um, 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 looking at citing, um, you'd think probably, but you're sure as hell not spending seventy thousand dollars an acre to buy Texas farm ground. You're not spending fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred in leases for Texas ground to put solar panels on. Now, then we'll talk, that is not apples and apples, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I will talk to you all about Texas, I agree. I was thinking more Midwest, but I hear what Kevin said. He's covered this in.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I got one question. We informed you guys that your application was incomplete with a short list of, of missing items. The response from Dickinson Wright was that essentially the answers to most of them is under P A two thirty-three, we don't have to answer this, that we're not subject to this, we don't need to provide this data. Dickinson Wright also represents Ranger Power, who applied directly to the MPSC without a township option. And the MPSC came back with a far longer and more detailed list of missing items in their application, also represented by your same law firm. Do you want to stick by your position that our objections to the incomplete application were unreasonable when your law firm is dealing with a far larger one from MPC, MPSC, who was the authority they were appealing to and saying that we don't have to give you that information? Do you have any comment on that at all?
Yeah, I'm going to have to go back and review our answer, to be honest.
I could have answered that for you, by the way. We've heard that answer a lot tonight.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mr. Weiss may want to come and give us another talking to. But I just wanted to get that out there because, you know, the clear implication, first of all, our tone has softened, but the initial responses were quite aggressive on your part, painted us as basically not bargaining in good faith, and our concerns about the incomplete application were dismissed as unreasonable expectations. Yet as the evidence comes out, out of the Public Service Commission, it's clear that there's probably many more things we should have been requiring of you. And I'm willing to guess that the MPSC is going to want answers faster and more quickly and more thoroughly than we are even given the time to compel here because you guys can quickly run out of clock. And that's where we're at. So next week, we will be faced with a array of options. We will deal with that quickly and effectively. We may very well have more questions to ask of you and your team, but we certainly expect to finish our deliberation over this within the hundred-and-twenty day timeframe. And that's you want to give us thirty days so we can do a more detailed, um, investigation, that's up to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question about the, uh, missing road commission data, is that on the active list to, to, um, to look at?
Yes.
That went out today, I think, didn't it, Kevin?
Which? Oh, well, yeah, because your.
Missing road commission.
Yeah, your book says that, uh, flip to section four-four or whatever it is, exhibit A four-point-four, and you can see all the communications from Lenawee County Road Commission. What were in there was communication with Lenawee County Planning Commission and no communications were listed at all with the road commission. So we would like those documents. I know the communications are taking place because like I say, I see Scott and I're at once a month. Again, they expected an application from you guys this spring and have not heard from you since then. So anyways, I will follow up with them again tomorrow, but, um, you know, your exhibit says that here's the communications and they are not in there, so, uh, if you can forward those stuff, that would be useful.
Now, and if you missed it, that question about the missing, um, appendix was sent today via email. Okay, if, if you missed.
Yep.
Any safe harbor comments?
No.
All right. Any other issues from the commission? Zoning administrator?
No, I said enough.
Legal counsel?
No, I'm good. Except I, I'll defend Texas. I like Texas. He was feeling bad about Texas. I'm from Illinois.
You could have picked a state worse than Texas, you did.
Trust me, I know where I'm from. Y'all are talking about politics and things that go out like.
I'm guessing you're in.
I know a state that's.
I'm guessing you're in the red minority, I'm just saying.
Well, you know, it's, it's, um, yeah, an interesting contrast in obviously geography, structure, you know, you know, geology, on and on and on.
And generation mix in the grid. It's far easier to shove a lot of renewables in when, A, they were gifted a four billion dollar transmission line. And B, the rest of their generation mix is highly flexible gas.
Yeah, yeah. Now, while I accuse Mr. Pompriyan of, um, using the not apples to apples comparison, that he did it inappropriately, now here we are going, uh, Michigan and Texas, that's not apples to apples, but forgive us the inconsistency. All right, other issues?
You know, if somebody moves to a journey, can't stop you.
All right.
Roger, anybody signed to speak? Did anybody sign up?
No, that was at the beginning of the meeting.
Where am I at here? Any other business in front of the planning commission? Next special meeting is, um, uh, next week. I'm certain that, um, our, our, our state friends will have a, a lot of time and a lot of the floor and a lot of things to respond to, um, next, uh, next Wednesday night. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Rich? Support from Steve. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.